Good evening. This is the May meeting of the Burlington Planning and Zoning Commission, an appointed advisory board consisting of five city residents appointed by the Burlington City Council, two extraterritorial members appointed by the county commissioners. This board makes its recommendations to the Burlington City Council. If you would at this time, please silence your phones or any electronic equipment that you have. Be advised that this meeting is being recorded. Is that correct? So we all record. Okay. As a point of order, if you're called on to make comments or want to speak, please come to the podium. State your name and address. Your comments will be limited to three minutes. Once again, come to the podium. State your name and address for the record. Thank you. If you'd conduct a roll call.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Sure. Chair Black.
Here.
Vice Chair Kirkpatrick is absent. Member Beasley.
Here.
Member Parker also absent. Member Roan also absent. Member Gamble.
Here.
Member Hill.
Here.
Member Wright absent. Member Zach Nelson.
Here.
And member Rayner absent.
Then we should have a quorum. At this time, I ask every commissioner to look over the minutes and the agenda for tonight. Do you have any conflicts of interest? Okay, thank you. Then I will ask for a motion for the approval of the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held April 23rd, 2024.
Those are not in your packet, and we're going to have those for the next meeting. So you won't be voting on them tonight.
Okay. We'll proceed on to item number three, rezoning 24-002. Mr. John Gillum, applicant, present a request to rezone property from office institutional to light industrial limited use. The property is located north of the intersection of Chapel Hill Road and Corporation Parkway, and it is addressed as 2020 Chapel Hill Road, and consisting of Alamance County Tax ID Number 132551. Mr. Gillum, would you like to present your application? If your brother will let you out.
Yeah. Council members, thank you for your time. We just purchased the property at Exco over. It's off O and I. We want to expand our self-storage facility and don't have plans for it right now, but it'll be storage. We're good with limited use. And limited use was recommended by the designer down here.
Exactly. Does anybody on the commission have any questions for Mr. Gillum?
Basic expansions, some of the buildings, all the draft.
Probably just vehicle storage, motorhome, or boat. We don't have any parking. But it doesn't mean that we wouldn't, again, we just had the opportunity to purchase the property and really hadn't had time to figure out a plan yet.
Mr. Chair. If you would, I have a couple of slides that help to show the story of what the applicant is asking for.
Yes.
The parcel is highlighted here in teal.
Right.
And...
These mirror the pictures we received in our packet.
That's correct, yep. All of this is from your packet.
Right.
The existing self-storage facility is to the east. I'm circling it with my mouse. So the applicant is seeking a rezoning request shown here on the next slide. The current zoning of the property that's in question is O and I or office and institutional, and they're seeking to change that to light industrial with a limited use as the applicant has indicated. The regional commercial future land use designation is shown on the map to the right. And here are the three proposed uses that the applicant has requested.
There is a building on that property, correct?
There is.
Yep. There's the current house. It's, well, we can't use it, and so at some point in time we'll either move it or tear it down.
At this point, is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to address this? Anyone on this side? What is the staff recommendation?
Staff is recommending the rezoning request as it is consistent with the future land use designation for that area and helps to support the expansion of their existing facility.
Thank you. Once again, I'll ask the commission, are there any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I have one question, if I could.
Oh, sure.
The high-density residential area to the left of that, according to the map, is there anything there? I didn't have a chance to...
A little left of that property?
Yeah.
Here's one house.
A house, but no apartments or anything else?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's a real property.
Any other questions? Once again, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion. Make a motion to recommend approval of the request to rezone property from office institutional, OI, to light industrial limited use, LILU. The property is located north of the intersection of Chapel Hill Road and Corporation Parkway, addressed as 2020 Chapel Hill Road, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 132551. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning in the comprehensive plan, and that the future land use map in Section 4 Land Use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to be regional and commercial. The request is compatible with the adjacent residential and commercial uses. The action is reasonable and in the public interest, and that the comprehensive plan calls for residential and commercial uses in the area. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area. The request of rezoning will support economic development in the area through the expansion of any existing commercial operation.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? We have a roll call of the vote.
Chair Black.
Aye.
Member Beasley.
Aver.
Member Gamble, approve. Member Hill.
Approve.
And members Zach Nelson.
Approve.
John, you'll be notified. You'll receive a letters to when the council will vote on this with our motion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Item number four, rezoning 24004. Mr. Henry Astul Sergovia Crespo, applicant, to present a request to rezone property from heavy industrial to high-density residential. The property is located south of the intersection of Graham Street and Gilmer Street, addressed as Zero Gilmer Street, and consisting of Alamance County Tax ID Number 136959. Mr. Crespo, are you here? Would you come to the front?
I'm representing him. He's an ID coming to real find this property.
And your name?
Artemio Carvajal.
Would you spell that? And your address?
Papa Seven McCartney.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
The reason we're here is that we want to build around three houses in the area, change it to now as a commercial thing, or industrial something like that.
What size houses were you looking to build?
Single, talking about 200 square feet, something like that.
Single bedroom?
Three bedroom, two bedroom.
At this time, does anyone on the commission have any questions?
The houses would be single-family houses, not...
And would it be one-story homes?
If I may, what's in front of you is a general rezoning request to high-density residential, so you don't, you won't be able to impose any conditions in terms of stories or the type of development. The applicant has requested the high-density residential without a limited use. So if the zoning does get approved, they could build single-family attached, detached, multifamily, any use really that's permitted under the high-density residential zoning district. This map shows the area as I've had on the screen, and you can see the existing zoning of the property is heavy industrial. Future land use designation is traditional residential. This just really depicts the dimensional standards for that zoning district. So it is the applicant's request to go to high-density residential. If, if potentially they were building single-family, they could get potentially roughly nine units or up to 42 apartments. So this just kind of shows you the allowable density, even though the applicant has indicated maybe only three or four units. Just giving you some additional insight.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Why would you be requesting high-density if you just want single-family? Do you have future plans to change it?
Not yet. It's supposed to be going to something approved into, because it's industrial now, not this one. It's a commercial project. That's why we tried to talk to the surveyor, tried to divide it, but I would like to something that we have a little bit of green light to continue.
May I ask a question of the applicant?
Yes.
Did you consider rezoning to medium-density residential that would allow density of 4.85 units per acre with a maximum on the property to be roughly six units, I believe?
Integrate?
No.
Most of the value given negative is four.
Pardon me?
Four.
Four. You're only seeking to build four units?
Four units. This is the, trying to figure out, is the...
Topography, yes.
The corner on the...
Yeah.
Yeah. The elevation, the topography.
It's too many complicated to make a lot.
We also had discussed with the applicant whether they would be willing to go the limited use route just for single-family detached only, but it was their choice to stick with the general rezoning request.
What else could be built there other than houses in the future then?
Daycare facilities, churches, other supportive uses.
And it would not have to go through rezoning then?
Correct.
For those, so you're saying approving any of those?
Correct. Multifamily, you know, going up to 30 units per acre. It would be allowed under the HDR zoning jurisdiction.
And what was the acreage?
It's 1.4 acres.
Does any commissioner have any other questions? Does anyone on this side of the room have any comments to make on this proposal? Does anyone on this side have any comments to make on this proposal? Thank you.
And Joan, to answer your question on page 72 of the packet.
Right.
Has the full table of permitted uses?
Permitted uses.
Okay. Thank you. The staff has recommended this.
I haven't got there yet.
It was at the top. Oh, okay.
That's okay. Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant? What is the staff recommendation?
We are recommending this rezoning request. This area is, is kind of in a transitional area before, between medium-density residential and some light industrial parcels. You can see on this map, staff feels that the change in the zoning would provide additional housing stock that is needed in the city and could offer various different types of housing opportunities.
Yes, and my understanding from growing up in that area, that hasn't been active in quite some time. Okay, no other comments? We have a staff recommendation. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion. I make a motion to recommend approval of the request to rezone property from heavy industrial to high-density residential. The property is located south of the intersection of Graham Street and Gilmer Street, and addressed as Zero Gilmer Street, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 136959. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan, in that the future land use map in Section 4 Land Use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to be traditional residential. The request is compatible with the adjacent residential uses. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential and commercial uses in the area. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area. The proposed zoning, if approved, would complement the character of residential development in this area while also allowing for additional infill residential housing within Burlington.
Thank you. I have a motion, second.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? We have a roll call of the vote, please.
Chair Black.
Approve.
Member Beasley.
Aver.
Member Gamble.
Approve.
Member Hill.
Approve.
And member Zach Nelson.
Approve.
It'll be approved. You will receive a letter from the, from the department as to when the city council will vote on this matter. So you'll get a letter with our recommendation. Thank you. I lost my mitt. Item number five, rezoning 24005. Ms. Caitlin Jackson, applicant, to present a request to rezone property from agricultural to medium-industrial limited use. The assembly of properties being located on the west side of Highway 61 in Guilford County, just south of the Guilford Macintosh Park and west of Homeview Road, and consisting of Guilford County Tax ID numbers 106961, 106966, 106967, 106968, 106970, 106973, 106976, 106977, 225491, and 225492. Ms. Jackson?
I'm most so bent for Ms. Jackson. I'm Nathan Duggins with Todd and Douglas Law Firm. My address is 400 Bellamy in Greensboro. We're on behalf of the applicant here this evening, Mr. Phillips, who's sitting right here. The Claps are here, and some of the other landowners are here as well. I'm going to take just a few minutes to try to frame up the applicant's request. This is both a rezoning request and an annexation request, and I think everybody's familiar with the site, and I think of this as the Red Eck Exchange. Red Eck Brewing Facility is right on 40 to the north here. The, the annexation request kind of speaks for itself, but it really evolves around the fact that there's an ETJ agreement between the city of Greensboro and the city of Burlington, and this property sits on the ETJ side, or the, excuse me, the Burlington side of the ETJ line. And so we've been working with staff, who've been great to work with, figuring out the best way to get this property into the city of Burlington and rezoned. We selected medium-density, which you heard the chair speak about. We want to do a clean industrial development at this site. I want to, I want to just read from the district standard so y'all can appreciate the purpose of, and ultimately the intent of the developer here, is to develop something that requires no land or structure to be used for any purpose that causes noxious or offensive odors, gas fumes, smoke, dust, vibration, or noise that substantially interferes with any other nearby uses. So we're thinking about either a light manufacturing facility or maybe some sort of distribution, but it would be a job-creating, tax-based-creating opportunity for the city of Burlington and for the county of Guilford. I know with the prior application, it was a straight rezoning. Now, we have limited the use, but the, the real limitation on the use here is the watershed. And there's 17 uses, I think there's 17 uses, that ultimately will come out of that list of 57 different uses that are barred by the watershed rules of the city. So that's going to be one, one issue that as we navigate through this evening will be apparent. We wanted to have some flexibility. We don't have a user right now, so until we have a user, we wanted to have some flexibility around the use, and that's why we, we, we only limited, I think we limited theaters was the use we limited, but we could limit some additional uses as well, but chose to keep it somewhat broad. The watershed has obviously been very important to our, to our process here. The water, you can't really see it on the map. Well, you can, thank you, yeah, you can see the, the finger of Lake Macintosh to the north there, and there's also a finger that runs below. We had a neighborhood meeting last week. We did a lot of room, so everybody participated. We had 13 attendees, including the Raiders, who are sitting here with us this evening, and Mr. Phillips is going to speak, not only to the development, but also discussions he's had with some of the neighbors. A number of the questions that we got from the neighbors related to water and sewer, and there's plans for water to come down Highway 61, city of Burlington Water, and most likely the sewer will be delivered by the city of Greensboro. So it'll be a combination of Burlington Water, city of Greensboro Sewer, all built by the city of Burlington. So I'm going to sit down and let Mr. Phillips stand up to give you a little more background about his efforts to assemble these parcels and his plans for the site.
Just a couple...
Oh, sure.
So you're not hearing an annexation request that goes through the city council?
Right.
And the request, I believe, is for medium-industrial with a limited use, so I just wanted to make that clear. I pulled up the existing tier map that is part of the Guilford County regulations and sort of circling the area. This is within their existing tier three, watershed protection overlay, and we can talk a little bit more about what that means compared to if this property is, and, and the reason why this request is in front of you, just backing up a step, is this, this area is adjacent to existing city lands. The Lake Macintosh itself is actually in the city's jurisdiction, so because this is adjacent to it, you're hearing the rezoning request. However, if the rezoning, the rezoning would be tied to an annexation request as well, and then if the zoning was approved, this area would be subject to the city's watershed protection overlay, which is actually more stringent than Guilford's one, so...
They're tier three, yeah.
Just wanted to back that up.
Thank you. Yeah, we're very familiar with that bubble map. And if there's questions about the VUA and the watershed tiers, we could, and then Mr. Lambert's here too, and he's been great to work with. So I'm going to let Ian get up and talk a little bit.
Good evening. Ian Phillips, offices at 8410 US Highway 158 in Stokesdale. My partner's eye at the Crown Companies, develop industrial and residential and retail developments across the southeast with a focus in North Carolina, triad native. So we do a lot of business in the, in the triad region. Started working with the Clapp family probably about a year, year and a half ago, and we started with 125-acre assemblage, and then we grew that to the 175, 173 that is today. This site being in a bit of no-man-land in between Burlington and Greensboro was quite a bit of a challenge to figure out who, who gets to zone it, and how do we get the water and sewer to work out. But fast forward a year and a half later, here we are. So we, a lot of people ask me, this, this is a, this is a big project to go into without a user, but it's a, it's a car, you know, chicken and egg thing. You have to have a ready-to-go zoned piece of property before you have a user, and you can't have a user with an unzoned piece of ground. So this is normal in, in my world, where you will go in, in, at the start of, from zoning, from now on, we will be working with users, and we've already started some of that process preliminarily. So the plan here was to get a, a medium-industrial zoning, to get a little bit more flexibility. We're seeing a lot of onshoring of manufacturing jobs come back home within instability overseas, and this site's in a, in a location where it could handle a significant employment center and a, a real boon to the tax base for this area. So what caught my eye is the proximity to the highway. We've got a site that now we have Greensboro and Burlington working together to try to figure out how to serve a property. So now we, you know, we're, we're making progress there, but it's in front of you today to ask for that medium-industrial zoning, and, and with that, we just hope to have a bit, a little bit more flexibility, knowing that we're going to be hamstrung a bit by what's in the watershed, as you would expect. But we still think within those limitation uses, we'll have the ability to attract a, a significant employment base to that site. So I'll be quiet and open myself up for questions. Anybody have appropriate time? Thank you.
Thank you. You have anything else on your presentation?
No, sir. Thank you. And if there's question, I think there, I think Mr. and Mrs. Rayner, they want to speak.
I didn't know if you had anybody else to come up.
Yeah, so if there's questions, I would be here to answer.
At this time, is there any questions? Is there any questions from the commissioners for this item? Anybody on this side of the, please step up, give your name and address?
My name is Don Rayner. 1364 NC Highway 61, and it's 27377.
Mr. Rayner?
First question. It was hard for me to hear you being behind you. When, when you said that there's a number of categories in the industry that can come in, did you say that you had weeded out 17 because of water? did you say that you had weeded out 17 because of watershed restrictions? Or there were 17 that were okay?
May I?
What I said was there, I think there's 57 different uses in the medium industrial zoning district. 17 of those, and Jamie's going to show you those. 17 of those uses are excluded because, because they're in the watershed. So that range down to 40, I guess. Did that answer your question?
No, that's not necessary.
Those prohibited uses are shown on this screen.
Right, no.
I've lived at that address for about 20, my wife and I and family, raised two children there for about 25 years. And Wiltson has been kind of a slow place to accept or have progress in a lot of ways, especially commercial development. There's still a local ballpark. There's a little volunteer fire department. The biggest thing there, I guess, is a TA truck stop. But there's still a lot of single family homes and farms that have been in families, just like the Klaps, for a long time. It's not unusual to see cows or horses or people farming, tractors in the front yard. So it's retained a lot of this rural character. The, the, it really actually ought to be in the North Carolina scenic corridor as far as Highway 61 and what should go through there, 62, out across the county. But unfortunately, things do change. People's lives change. The people that own property get older. They may have issues. And they want to do different things with their life. And that involves selling property that they own. And they should be allowed to do that. I'm all in favor of that. And it could be retirement, it could be medical, want to downsize, any number of things. I, I support people being able to utilize their assets as long as the sale of them does not infringe upon the values and the surroundings that are there. And I feel like the evolution of this industrial park is going to infringe to a degree, the greater degree that Stony Creek did, on the rural character of Wiltson and that area. I don't know if you guys have been to Wiltson. You blink your eyes and you'll miss it. But you can go by there and you go down to Stony Creek, and you'll see a different world in a mile and a half. And that's what's happened with development. If a development comes in, goes this land, and can have an access off Highway 61, which I understand that may be necessary, it's going to change Highway 61. The Guilford-MacIntosh Marina Park is, is right there, right at the first bridge. It's going to change that. It's going to be a, if you have tractor trailers coming out and going up and down, it's going to change the environment, noise level, safety. So there's a lot of things from that standpoint to think about. The other thing, which I'm glad to hear Mr. Duggan and Mr. Phillips say this, is the environment, the watershed. Unfortunately, I did not get to this meeting until about 10 days ago. And I have crammed, feel like I'm back in college trying to cram for a exam, making contacts and asking questions and trying to educate myself to the watershed issue. And it is a huge issue. This property, what drains off it feeds directly into Lake McIntosh. This property has borders Lake McIntosh. And if I'm not mistaken, I say this industrial watershed protected area along the lake is 200 feet, I believe. It changes in different categories. But other than that, it's all runoff. Right now, it's coming across 170 acres of land. Farmland, pasture, woods, clear cut, but it's rolling across land.
Mr. Rayner, I'm going to stop you right now because you've exceeded your three minutes and then some, but maybe you can come back in a minute after someone else can speak.
Okay, that'll be fine. So I just have one other thing to say, I'll come back.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right.
Anyone else on this side of the room wish to speak to this? Yes, sir.
Hello, sir, and planning board members here. I have been Scott Haislip, and I am.
Your address?
Address is 1423 NC Highway 61. I have been at this location for about approximately 25 years. And just as the gentleman was describing here, I believe that, first of all, I want to say also, I did not receive any information in regards to this proposal. Nothing was sent to me at all. I happened to learn from this from my neighbor, which is right beside me as well. He has been there 25 years too. This, this project is, and I believe in growth. I believe in these things. But we also have to factor in, you know, just what he was describing with runoff water, with the area in which this is going to be brought into the community. It is a small development, small area. And Wiltson is a very nice area to raise your family and to grow up in, the kids and my grandchildren. But when you start bringing in industrial, light industrial in an environment like this to a watershed in close proximity directly to it, not only that, but all of the proposals that they're bringing in with trucks and other factors, how is this going to affect the community? There, there ought to be other concerns, and I hope that this will be the case, to families, other families that will be involved in this. We're directly across the street from all of this. And we knew nothing about this proposal. And obviously, they have a choice to sell their land, and that's a good thing. But I believe other things should be considered as well in regards to these other families that will be affected by this. And I just hope and pray that you guys will consider these things and consider the other families that, that will be affected by this. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate that. Does anybody else on this side have some? Yes, sir.
First of all, thank you guys for serving the community in this way on this, this planning board. My name is Patrick Landon Brown. I live at 1427 NC 61. I'm also representing my neighbor Jim Fogelman, who lives at 1431 NC 61. As has previously been said, Mr. Rayner and my other neighbor, we just, we're kind of blindsided by this whole deal. First I heard about it was about five days ago. Got something in the mail the day after that. I happened to talk to the neighbor across the street to find out about it. And then, you know, the concerns have already been brought up with the ones living on the other side of Highway 61. There are like five or six or maybe up to 10 properties there, single family, and lots of families in that, in that region. And we moved there because of the rural setting, because of the quiet neighborhood, because it's a good place to raise our three children, who are still, one is still at home, two hopefully out soon. But, you know, it's just a concern for the community. As Mr. Rayner said, it's, it's a nice, small-town feel. And next thing we know, we've got this huge possibly development coming across the street. With, I'm a tractor trailer driver myself, and I know how loud and how heavy those are and the noise they make. So it's, it's just a concern. I didn't move there thinking that would ever happen. And, you know, all due respect to, to my neighbors across the street. They're perfectly willing to make the deals as, as they see fit. And some good folks, by the way, had really good neighbors over the years. So it's just, just a matter of my preference and the preference of these folks who have lived there for 25 years and don't want to see that setting affected, which it will be. Noise, trucks, access, water. I have some questions about the water and sewer, which I wasn't, I didn't get the mail notification about the Zoom meeting, missed that. But we do have some questions, but I'm not sure if this is the proper place to ask those questions, but perhaps in a few minutes. But thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else on this side of the room that wishes to address this side? Is there anyone on this side of the room wishes to address this side? Mr. Rayner?
Yes?
If you would like to ask your question?
Okay, thank you, sir. This is a, not a simple going from agriculture to single family, 40 square, 1,000 square foot, single family lot request. This is involved. I personally, I met Mr. Phillips, and he and I talked, and I think they have good intentions. I think there's a lot of questions, though, that have not been answered that should be answered before a vote is taken on this matter. Traffic, water, sewer, runoff, so forth. Especially considering the, the time that us residents have been given to educate ourselves. So I don't know if it's in order or not. But I would like to ask the board if you would continue this hearing as opposed to taking a vote tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Brown, you said something about wanting to talk about water and sewer. Is there something you want to address on that now?
If I can ask questions about it.
Please.
Yeah, just, I don't know if I can move here, but just the, the city of Burlington's going to bring water. I think that's part of the whole deal. And you mentioned sewer from Guilford. Would that come down 61 as well?
It will not come down 61. It'll be access to the backside.
Okay, figured. So the water deal, will there be a requirement for residents on the other side of the street to tap into that?
I don't, I can't speak to, for the city of Burlington, but I do know that the citizens can tap once someone wants to. But Mr. Lambert might be a better person to answer that question than me.
Mr. Lambert?
Hey, thank you, Mayor Moore. I'm a city engineer for the city of Burlington. So the city already has a funding water project to extend water down 61 that will actually go all the way down to the Peace Haven nonprofit that's even further south than this property.
Right.
So no resident along that stretch, any homeowner, is not required to tap into the city water. If they wish to tap into the city water, then there's a process in which they would make that request, which would also then request an annexation as well to give city of Burlington utilities. But at this time, it will be available, but there will be no requirements that anyone would have to tap onto that one.
So I guess, yeah, that answers my question. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
I guess a further question regarding that is the zoning. The, the reason we could not have an extra dwelling on our property was because we were in tier four of the lake situation there. So we could not have but one dwelling with a, a septic system. So if we didn't have the septic sewer from Highway 61, then I presume that would still be in place. So anyway, that, I think, answers those questions. So will the rezoning affect the properties across the street in any way whatsoever? I don't know if I can ask that. Yeah, annexation, I remember.
It's not going to cause the properties that are on the east side of the street to be annexed.
Okay, okay.
Typically, the application is made by the applicant for the annexation. And in this case, my understanding, it's going to just coincide directly with the rezoning area as well. So there's no obligation for anyone outside of the area to be annexed.
Okay, and as Mr. Rayner brought up, I don't know that there's any reason to know or way to know right now if there's going to be an entrance off of Highway 61 for that.
I think it is likely that there will be an access way off of 61. Very likely.
Okay, figured. Will there be any efforts made to create a natural buffer zone or barrier?
Absolutely.
To surrounding neighbors?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Okay. Once again, this is a zoning question. They're looking to rezone the property they do. At this time, I don't even know if they have a purchaser. Once the purchaser takes over and wants to develop, then they come back, well.
They would, they would, if the zoning is approved.
Approved, yes.
Then they, as long as they're consistent with the zoning regulations, then that's an administrative.
Right.
It would not be coming back.
No, it falls under the UDO at that point. So once, once it is sold and they decide to develop, the unified development ordinance would take over and demand lighting, runoff, shrubbery, all of this. Then that was, that's when that takes over. So right now, they're just looking to rezone. It's not going to be pretty much up to them. It'll be whoever purchases the, the thing. One of the problems that always comes to us in a situation like this is, is the comment that Mr. Brown said, you know, I didn't think this would happen. And when you live off of an interstate with an exit to that interstate, at some point, there's going to be development. It's, it's going to happen. And it's a tough decision because both or all the people that spoke said that the people who were selling the property, they had no problem with their right to sell the property. You may, you may decide at some point you would like to retire and sell that property, and then there'll be somebody coming up saying, well, I didn't know this. Now, the problem I have, the one, the only concern I have is the fact that no one was notified. And we send letters to three, was it 300 foot from the property line? And.
And I think we sent letters, Mr. Chairman, to about 700 circles. A thousand-foot circle. So we sent those letters out on May 9th, which would have been different than the notice that came from the city.
Right. And that, that is always a problem too. As far as I'm concerned, every, every application should be in a local paper or on the radio or something like that.
It is also noticed, and the property is also posted.
Yes, there are signs that were put up, what, 30 days ago?
About.
When was, when were the signs put?
About 10 days.
10 days ago, yes. Yes, I'm sorry. I was thinking of something else, 10 days ago. So there were signs that, that went up and, and letters that went out either 300 to 1,000 foot radius or distance from the property line. But yes, it, it's a problem trying to get in touch with everyone. We run into this constantly. You were, you were not singled out to be ignored.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I'm just telling you that I can't remember a meeting that we've had that somebody didn't say, we didn't hear anything about it. And we turn around and, and we know letters were sent and signs were put up, but it's just one of those things. I can predict, I can tell you that the city of Burlington didn't try to slight you.
Oh, yes, sir, absolutely. And it's from our perspective, anyway, of the other neighbors, it's, it's hard when you hear about something like this and you weren't even informed about it, you know. It makes it difficult.
It is, it's difficult. And also, there could be that there were, you know, decisions that had to be. It is, it's difficult, and also there could be that there were, you know, decisions that had to be made, deals that needed to be worked, and, you know, it is what it is. Does anyone else on either side? Because I want to, I want to give you a chance. Okay. Mr. Duggan, if you wanted to respond?
I just wanted to speak real quickly. I appreciate the commission's patience, it's even here, and everybody's viewpoint on this. But the traffic issue was mentioned by one of the speakers, and I, and I know the commission knows this, but, and you touched on it, Mr. Chairman. A full traffic impact study will be done. Any impact to the, to the, to Highway 61 there will be mitigated with off-site improvements, whether it be decel lanes, leftover lanes. And that would be part of the process you were describing that happens kind of at the administrative level. But I just wanted the commission to feel comfortable that if this zoning is approved, there will be a process to address any increased traffic issues.
Thank you. At this time, does anyone from the commission have any questions for the applicant? Any statements?
Question for staff. Jamie, watershed tiers are set by the state, correct? They're not, you don't have any UDO about that here?
We do. So this property would fall under, we don't have tiers like Guilford County does. In fact, our provisions would limit impervious coverage to roughly 24, 8, 24% of the development site, different than Guilford County, which was at 33% for that tier. Can I speak a little bit more?
Yeah, so the state sets out minimum standards for watershed critical areas. You can adopt what the state sends out as kind of a draft ordinance that is pre-approved by them, or you can go around adopting your own ordinance that can either meet or exceed. So Guilford County has a tiered system, which is not the state model, but they have approved through the state. City Burlington's ordinance follows the model ordinance, which does not have tiers. So in Guilford County, you have tiers one, two, three, and four, which is based on the distance from the lake itself. The further away you get from the lake, you can go above 24% impervious, but the closer you get, you actually get less than 24% impervious. Most of this site hasn't existed. Guilford County, most of the sites in tier three, which is 34% impervious for Guilford County rules. If the city council annexes this property and then applies zoning to this property under our current watershed ordinance, we don't have tiers and everything is 24% impervious. So actually, for this piece of property, Burlington's watershed critical area ordinance is a little bit more restrictive than Guilford County's.
So it'll allow, pay the parking of 40 acres plus on that site?
Yeah, 20, roughly a quarter of the 170, I think, three-acre site could be impervious. There's ways to increase their usable area. Of course, it's at a cost to the developer, but they could go to a pervious pavement concrete that does not count against them, but then have a subdrain system that also treats stormwater. To get to that 24% impervious, you have to be considered high density, which means you have cold water and sewer, so you're not a well in septic. And then you also have to have stormwater controls that are treating your runoff, and all of that is covered and dictated by the UDO.
Thank you for my last one.
You get one every time. Does anybody?
I'm going to share information Guilford County gave me about the tiers, if I may.
Certainly.
There's two and a half percent of...
Excuse me, if you step up so we can...
There's two and a half percent of tier two on the property, 170 acres. There's 33% of the property in tier three. There's nothing beyond that. It averages out about 34% for the entire tract. That's what Guilford County says.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Just one clarifying question. This is more for you, I think.
This is a question regarding the mailing that was sent out. It references as tax, Alamance tax identification number on my property. I just wondered why there's an Alamance County tax ID number for me, who lives in Guilford County. Or is that a typo?
It would just be a typo.
Okay, just, just making sure.
Or, or you could have some back taxes. I'm surprised. All right. Any other commissioner have any questions or comments at this time? Jamie, staff recommendations?
Staff is recommending this rezoning request as it is consistent with the Guilford County Comprehensive Plan, which calls for this area, which is identified as part of the Rock Creek area, to be an employment area and a growth area. So as a result of that, we are recommending the rezoning request.
Okay. If there are no other questions from the commission, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion?
Mr. Beasley?
Make a motion to recommend approval of the request to rezone from agriculture acre to medium industrial limited use, M I L U. Assembly of property is being located on the west side of Highway 61 in Guilford County, just south of Guilford Macintosh Park and west of Homeview Road, consisting of Guilford County tax identification numbers 106961, 106966, 106967, 106968, 106970, 106973, 106976, 106977, 225491, and 225492. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with Guilford County Comprehensive Plan and that this area is included under the Rock Creek area, which identified the conflicts between county and city green for a... The request is compatible with the existing commercial and industrial uses in the area. Action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the Guilford County Comprehensive Plan calls for this area to be an employment center.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Roll call, please.
Chair Black.
Approve.
Member Beasley?
Approved.
Member Gammel?
Approved.
Member Hill?
Approved.
And Member Zach Nelson?
Opposed.
Duggan, you'll be notified. You will receive a letter as to when the city council will act on this recommendation. Once again, for anybody in the audience, this will go to city council with our recommendation. You are more than happy to attend that meeting and make your feelings known also.
Well, I'm sorry, sir. Will that meeting be?
Staff will be presenting this item to the city council as a work session. They are the ones that will set the public hearing date. So at this point, we don't have a particular date, but you can reach out to the planning department at 336-222-5110 at any point, and we will let you know what the status is.
Thank you, ma'am.
And then if you want to spread that word about...
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
We will be presenting this at the next work session, which will be the first Monday in June. So after that date, they will, there will be an anticipated public hearing date set, most likely. We would recommend for the 16th, I believe, would be the third Monday.
I think the first Monday is June 3rd.
Hold on, let me get my calendar, actually. Should not include dates. Yeah, so work, work session is going to be on the 3rd, and then the 17th would be the third Monday.
All right, thank you very much. Item number six, rezoning 24007, Mr. Ryan Moffett. Applicant present a request to rezone property from medium-density residential and light industrial to general business limited use. Property is located on the northwest side of the intersection of East Sixth Street and Tucker Street and addressed as 621 East Sixth Street, 821 Tucker Street, and 915 Tucker Street, and consisting of Alamance County tax ID number 122632, 122625, 122626, and 122627. Mr. Moffett?
Thank you, Chair Black. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for taking your time, once again, on a Monday evening. My name is Ryan Moffett. I'm a lawyer at the Vernon Law Firm. Our address is 522 South Lexington Avenue. It's privileged to be before you this evening representing Burlington Christian Academy, Burlington Assembly of God Church, and Assembly Oaks Retirement Community. That is an affiliated entity with the Burlington Assembly Church. Those three entities are the property owners of the assembled subject properties that we're requesting rezoning before you this evening. I'm pleased to be joined this evening with Jason Pike, who is a BCA parent and construction consultant, Chad Danforth with Bobbit Construction, also a BCA parent, Blair Pittman with Bobbit Construction. And then who do I have from the school this evening?
Sure. I'm Laura Ferrara, acting interim head of school for Burlington Christian Academy.
I'm Jason Ferrara. I'm head of operations for all the physical aspects of the school.
Both parents as well?
Yeah.
With kids at Burlington Christian.
I'm Brian Rainbow, pastor of Burlington Assembly and the chair of the school board.
Michael Heath, deacon at the BCA board and church board, and father of three at BCA.
Welcome to you all.
Thank you all for being here. I should add, I'm also a BCA parent of a pre-K four-year-old and then a pre-K three-year-old next year. So we're all here to endorse the good work that Burlington Christian Academy and Burlington Assembly is doing. This is, this request is what we've sort of coined a cleanup or a corrective request. We're not looking forward to a change in use of the subject parcels here. Burlington Christian Academy has been operating on the property since 1978, '79, at the enablement of, of the church that's been on the property since, since 1955, according to Pastor Rainbow. The Burlington Assembly is, is part of the mission work that the church is doing. And of course, there's the caring kitchen, which is on the smaller parcel. It's also a part of Burlington Assembly's mission outreach. This property has, over its, at least the, the school, the private Christian schools' existence for the last 45 years, has operated pursuant to a special use permit that was issued under what was R9 residential zoning, originally issued in 1978 and amended several times over the course of the ensuing 45 years under that same R9 zoning designation. Of course, when the city adopted its current Unified Development Ordinance, that R9 zoning translated to a medium-density residential zoning classification for the entire assemblage, but for a small sliver of light industrial zoning, which extends over from what I believe is the Carlot property. Fortunately for, for the church and for the school, and as importantly for the community, these institutions have enjoyed quite a bit of success and with that, quite a bit of growth recently. The team that is here this evening has been working very hard long before I got involved, among themselves, among their stakeholders, and also with the city staff to evaluate how these properties, how these organizations can continue to look forward and best grow. And one of the big identifiers that came out of those conversations was to address the current zoning so that the city could plan for and view the property in the same forward-looking light that these good folks do as well, and no longer recognize it as a residentially zoned property, but as a property zoned for the uses that it has accommodated for 40 and 50-plus years. A church, private educational institution, they offer pre-kindergarten through 12th grade educational curriculum, and also mission outreach, which does include a multifamily housing component, and, and as I mentioned earlier, a caring kitchen. And so we arrived at the request before you this evening to zone the property for a general business use with a series of limited uses that after deliberation, we've determined are natural or reasonable uses that you could, one would expect could evolve out of the existing uses and the uses that have been proven to be compatible for the property and compatible with surrounding properties. Those limited uses, as you can see, are multifamily dwelling, which is one of the existing uses, child daycare center, which is tangentially related to the pre-kindergarten offerings, college or university, community youth senior center, Coliseum Conference Conference Center, park, religious institution, which is an existing use, elementary, middle, high school, which are part of the existing use, vocational school, and then business incubator co-working space, event venue, gymnasium, fitness center, indoor commercial recreation and outdoor commercial recreation. All of these uses we would posit could naturally come out of what has, has been in existence on the property and successfully so for many years in the past, and as recent success would suggest for many years in the future. So I'll stop talking at this point and take any questions you all have. And if any, anyone from the school or the church would like to introduce themselves or say anything, they're here to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. Does anyone on the commission have any questions at this time for the applicant? Does anyone on this side of the room wish to make any comments or questions? Anyone on this side?
My name is Brian Rainbow.
Of course, the pastor of the church.
Your address?
And over the ministries there on that campus.
Your address?
My address, personal residential, is 2106 Allison Court, Burlington.
Thank you.
For the record, Mr. Black, if I may, I have three granddaughters in the school, so I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that as well. But I want to thank you for considering this. The, we feel privileged to, to have this school on that campus. I've had about 10 years, a little more than 10 years, experience with the school as pastor of the church. And it's just, I think, just a great thing to see so many families. I think we're approaching 500 families that have children there at the, at the school, the academy. And so it's, it's a neat thing on any given day, Monday through Friday during the school year, to see such activity taking place and so many families, their lives enhanced, as well as their children, grandchildren receive a good education. And then the caring kitchen, of course, I don't know how familiar you are, are with that, that ministry. But for 40-some years, it has given out food and ministry to those... ministry, but for 40-some years, it has given out food and ministry to those in our community that are in need and struggling, and it's also been neat to see that take place. And so we also have the Assembly Oaks Retirement Facility where there are actually 19 individuals retired that stay there in that low-income facility. So I just wanted to not make an advertisement here, just want to express appreciation to you all for considering this, and we just want to continue being an asset to our immediate neighborhood that we try to work closely with, and also to the Burlington City. So, thank you. Appreciate that.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Does any commissioner have a question or a comment? Staff recommendation?
Staff does recommend this rezoning request as it is consistent with the future land use designation. I will also add a much refined mention, but through this rezoning request, if it's approved by city council, that would prevent the applicant then having to go back to the board adjustment for any kind of future modifications. This would allow the school and any of the other uses to operate in perpetuity with the rezoning, so that the school or any of the other uses could procedurally expand or alter as long as it is consistent with the zoning designation of the area.
Thank you. Once again, with no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Good question. So the schools have to go through board adjustment for anything they've done so far?
Yes, in this situation, they have. There's been at least five special use amendments over time, and typically, the way that the special use permits work is that they are tied to a site plan.
Yeah.
So any deviation from that would trigger going back.
Deviation.
Yeah.
And again, at this time, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to recommend approval of the request to rezone property from medium density residential and light industrial to general business limited use. The property is located on the northwest side of the intersection of East 6th Street and Tucker Street, and addressed as 621 East 6th Street, 821 Tucker Street, and 915 Tucker Street, and consisting of Aliments County tax identification numbers 122632, 122625, 122626, and 122627. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the Comprehensive Plan, in that the future land use map in Section 4 Land Use of the Comprehensive Plan calls for this area to be traditional residential, and the request is compatible with the existing uses on the property and the adjacent residential uses. This action is reasonable in the public interest in that the Comprehensive Plan calls for residential uses in the area. The request is compatible with the existing zoning, special use permit, and land uses in the area, and the proposal moves the site further into conformity with the future land use designation. Any future expansions will be required to comply with the city's Unified Development Ordinance.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Roll call, please.
Chair Black.
Approve.
Member Beasley?
Approved.
Member Gammel?
Approved.
Member Hill?
Approved.
And Members Zach Nelson?
Approved.
You will be notified, right as you know, by a letter of when the city will act on this recommendation.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Is there any new business to come before this board?
Not at this time.
Is there any old business?
Not at this time.
Still no, no old business, huh?
No.
Okay, well, that being said, then if anybody would like to make a motion to adjourn, I'll be glad to entertain it.
Motion to adjourn?
There's a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.